Alright, great, thanks, Alan. Uh, so my name is Paul Peggley Ferry, I'm the Chair of the North Porzo Zoning Board Appeals. Uh, it is August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, uh, and it's past, um, seven P M. So this open meeting of North Porzo Zoning Board Appeals is being conducted in person and remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of Twenty Twenty Three relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the North Porzo Zoning Board Appeals are allowed to participate either in person or remotely. The Act allows North Porzo Zoning Board Appeals to meet in person and remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Unless the Chair knows otherwise, members of the public who wish to view livestream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to North Porro Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless that participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. Alright, so, uh, first up is the consideration of petition of Dominic Vincenino for Dimensional variance for replacement of prefabricated shed within the side yard setback and rear setback of a property located at nine Valentine Road, map thirty seven, parcel one oh four, in the residential B zoning district. Um, this application will require. Alright, quick. So, uh, Dominic?
Yeah, hey everyone, uh, nice to meet you all, but here is, um, Vincenino and, like I just said, I live in Valentine Road. Um, I've been a resident in North Porro for a couple of years now, a lot of those from around, always visited, loved the town. Um, yeah, thank you everyone for your time today.
Yeah, so I guess, uh, do you want to just kind of give us an overview of, uh, you know, the project that you're proposing? What exactly it is you're looking for, just kind of, you know, give an overview of, of what you're asking me to look for?
Yeah, for sure, uh, so today my property does have a shed. Um, it's a little bit small and if there's a, yeah, my advice, everything else that I have in there, uh, it's actually about it. So, um, the reason why I'm looking to add a new shed, a little bit larger footprint, is my mom recently moved in with me back in March of this year. Uh, she's handicapped and we need to source some ramps and some other things and also get more space in my garage. So I wanted to get a larger fence to be able to accommodate that space. Um, economically, it just made sense instead of adding that to the home, just as financially, there's a lot to add on, more space versus just adding a shed. Um, so we had visited a few places, uh, Clear Farms out of Connecticut, had a twelve by twenty shed that was pre-constructed. Um, and her mom, uh, passed it all to snow ratings with some slight modifications to clean. Uh, but yeah, so they, I'm requesting that they place it with a five foot setback versus a fifteen foot setback from the rear and a twenty-three foot setback versus a twenty-five foot setback, um, sorry, in the side, which is rare. Uh, the reason why I'm requesting a variance today is because I actually have a wheat field in the middle of my property that the current shed is on. And it spans out and there's some pictures too, but there are some trees with some larder roots as well after that wheat field. But I have to take out the trees, I have to still maintain a setback from the wheat field. I did reach out to a septic company, they request like these ten feet, or they recommended these ten feet uh, from the wheat field just to keep that safe, because I do have to dig down. Um, and then, yeah, again, the roots. So with all that, uh, that's what I'm here today to just request if we need to close something off, I have to follow. Uh, so five foot side, which is standard for sheds less than a hundred and twenty-four feet, and then twenty-three foot from the rear, which is asking for two feet of relief.
So, will, will the existing shed be taken down?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be taken down. Uh, and so the proposed, where the proposal, um, site is going to be, how far is it from the septic wheat field?
Um, I didn't know the exact distance from the wheat field, but we determined where it was going to be because we had a tree company coming in to assess the trees. We did have to pick some out to be able to really get it in, but we tried to learn some of the reasons of the property. Um, so obviously those are our roots, but I had to estimate it was probably, I think, within, you know, like over fifteen feet. Um, yeah, so within twelve or fifteen feet from that, ten feet from the septic, but due to the massive trees in front and all their roots is the reason why we had to push a little bit further back.
Are there any questions you can add? Or, sorry, I'll start with Steph, um, Bob and Laurie, do you guys have any questions or comments?
I did not have any questions, um, I did visit the site last week and, uh, thankfully they were home and I visited and they showed me precisely the location, so did you have any questions about, um, what's there? Do you have any answer that we can start with you?
Yeah, so I guess.
Yeah, I, I've not been at the site or driven by several times. Um, so I don't have a precise location of what the application stating is. It's pretty much on, on par with preserving as many trees as you can.
There is, um, on the, on the boundary line between this property and, uh, the closest butter to the five foot setback that they are requesting. Uh, there are a number of trees, so there's quite a landscape buffer uh, between his yard, as it currently exists, and their yard.
Just a thing I should also add, so there are two fences that are on the neighbor's property that the shed will be in front of. One of them is a six-foot fence, the other is a four-foot chain fence. I did have the lot surveyed back then, I think it was, so it was a certified plot plan here. Originally, what I mentioned earlier was I was trying to add on to make more space for my mom. I had the, uh, surveyor come and stake out the entire lot and see what my options were. Due to cost, I decided that this is the more economical option to add some storage space in the property.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just a quick call, I'm just looking at it, looks like there are new trees and a decent buffers on, um, with the butter. Um, so there are going to be electricity in there and is there any lighting?
No.
Okay.
They, they did it and drop it off, there's nothing, um, there's no electric in it, it's just, yeah. Uh, are there any other questions or? Yeah.
One question is to the Chair, which, I know we'll get to the public comments section, but I will, I will be interested to hear if there were any comments from, I assume Laurie, but, butters were notified and have we received any comments from any of the butters?
I have not.
Subject to anything maybe today?
Question.
Okay, so let's, um, answer that question. And then secondly, looking at the top of traffic map that was included in the materials, it does look like as you go from the septic field, the other direction in the property, it's kind of a steeper grade, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, so it does slow down.
So the topography would make it, so you couldn't locate this on, on that side of the backyard, right?
Yeah, so there's a few reasons why we chose that side, so one is the slope, two, to maintain the setbacks on that side as well as the setback that was recommended from the septic company for the wheat field, it's very narrow from that side to the side of the lot. Um, and you can also see more from the street from that area. So we're trying to find a place that didn't really disturb the, the neighbors. I guess didn't cover my existing wheat field or septic. We did think about pulling it closer, which we wouldn't have to do the rear setback, but unfortunately we're running into the D box and then my actual septic system. So we went through a round of different considerations and this seemed to be the best place for it, so.
Okay, good question.
Yep, and so is Zero Howard Street that, uh, parcel behind here tucked behind, it has no, no frontage to Howard Street?
I think that's it.
Owned by the town.
That's owned by the town. Which is Zero Howard, and it's a butter, I think, or both owned by Vincen Corporation. Okay, they have two lots and they're the residential lot.
You guys got it.
Uh, so Vincen Corporation, it's, it's a corporation, I came here, I have the two sets, and I think they operate services for disabled and so on.
Okay.
And then I just, y- your lot is essentially not conforming right now.
Yeah.
Or, uh, that's minimum with, and then you also have easement.
Yes.
Access easement.
Yeah.
That's another reason why I actually don't place it for the back.
Yes.
Obviously on here, but.
Yeah.
Should have mentioned that.
Yeah.
Okay, so the drainage vent comes in from the sides, people get in front of the house in the backyard, it's in from the side all the way to the front and then maybe when you put the street, pump the gas. Due to the water, then it comes down, you get water, you can literally see the river flow through that area, and so that's another reason why I wanted to place it further from that, so it doesn't walk away.
Okay, Mr. Chair, quick question, uh, and I think I know the answer, but, uh, maybe Laurie or Bobna. Uh, the Zero Howard Street, I was a little thrown off because that's not where zero would be on Howard Street, but it seems to be that there isn't a building located there, so it would have gotten the address number and that's why it shows zero in the system.
That's correct, so all undeveloped land has zero, as it says, for the most part. There may be an exception here or there, but for the most part, um, it would just be a, by the zero. So there could be several zeros on the same street.
Okay, that was just probably my confusion when I was reading.
Um, and so just to confirm, what you're looking for is ten feet of relief from the side setback, um, and approximately two feet of relief from the rear setback. Okay. Um, are there any other questions you can board? Uh, so this is a public hearing. Um, if there are any members from the public who wish to make a comment, uh, either in person or online, um, please click the raise hand, uh, button on Zoom or someone to hear a person that wants to speak can do so as well. Just confirming that you can see any reasons.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, are there any additional questions from the board? At this time, any other questions from the set?
Uh, just remember that should the board grant this, um, you are going to be required to submit a final, um, survey askill to confirm that you placed it within the, um, limitations of what the board wants.
Alright, so whatever we grant for duty, I think what Bob is saying is that make sure that it's there, given that people have to come back. Direct this board, decide if you have the extra plug or if you can't run. Okay. Last after, uh, questions that come us? Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion to.
You have a post here. Yeah, I'd like to close the, uh, public hearing for nine and eleven and road.
Okay. The answer made by Brad, close vote here and the second by Suzy, Joe Hayes. Alright, you got a decision? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. First, uh.
You're welcome to say if you want, you don't have to leave.
As I say, how does he know what happens?
Me too, Tim.
Yeah.
Okay, you gotta hold a watch.
Watching your car.
Sorry, man, I think giving the size a lot, uh, given the, the, the different topography with, um, uh, the hill that's on, you know, the side of the property, um, the amount of vegetation between his property and the neighbor's property, um, uh, again, the narrowness of the property and the septic, um, I think that it is appropriate to grant the relief that the applicant is.
Yeah, and that's what you're not agreeing, and, I mean, I think he, not that we're gonna put the act through the wringer, but made a case for hardship as far as, um, you know, it's not like, I just want, I want to put it there, it's like, I have to put it there because of A, B, and C.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, I think it makes full sense to grant this, uh, the relief.
I agree. Application was very thorough, all the sense.
Yeah, just kind of, look, thinking about it, um, there's a topography issue on this lot that makes it very difficult to, um, build this structure, which I think is a reasonable, uh, thing to have on a, in the zone, um. The topography makes it, uh, difficult to build it appropriately away from the, um, side and rear lot lines, in addition to the shape of the lot, squeezing the side and rear lot lines toward the back of the lot. Um, which are two of the three reasons I guess we can use, topography and shape. And then thirdly, I don't know the extent to which roots and vegetation qualifies as a soil condition, but, um, in my view that they may. Uh, but there's certainly vegetation issues of, uh, and I don't think that it would be in the best interest of the neighborhood and the overall feeling of the lot and in the benefit of the town to be cutting down mature trees if it can be avoided. And it sounds to me like the applicant has gone through great efforts to try to avoid doing those kinds of things and to try to be uh, as good of a community as possible to the neighborhood and not disrupting, um, butters or the town in general. And I also note that, uh, we haven't heard any comments or objections from any butters um, that were notified at this hearing, so for all those reasons, I agree with the Chair.
Uh, yeah, the, the shade topography, it's, uh, we vouch for variance as, as well as the, uh, hardship proven on a couple of different levels, and I certainly know the issues of it.
Jack, or Jack? Just saying that, you know, it's an accepted use, uh, to have a shed, there are the sheds in the area. It's a little bit larger than, um, some, but it's not, uh, exceedingly large, uh, and meets the, uh, standard skin.
I agree as well, and, uh, we should grant it early, I'm in favor.
Um, is there a motion? Uh, it's just, so what the applicant is looking for is, um, ten feet of relief from the side setback, um, and then we're looking for two feet from the rear setback. Um, so what I don't have, you want to give them that extra sort of little orange just case that they don't have to come back from those, you know, when we, when you.
Yeah.
Nine, nine and three?
Uh, give them additionally.
Oh, eleven.
Yes.
Yeah. Alright, yeah, I'll make a motion now to, uh, no, I, you don't put any other. Uh, making a motion to grant the variance to allow an encouragement of eleven feet to the fifteen foot side yard setback and encouragement of three feet into the twenty-five foot rear setback with placement of shed section seven dash zero six dash zero three zero on table two N C N dimensional regulations in the residential B district with the property located at nine at Valentine Road, map thirty seven, parcel one oh four.
I second.
Uh, Brad, any motion, then second to Suzy. Joe Hayes for vote. Alright, who's your guys? Alright, thank you very much.
Uh, yes. Do you want to, they'll also need to record this, I think, you know?
Yes, so, um, the next step is, of course, um, that there were some changes that I had to make based on tonight's discussion, so then Paul's gonna sign it. Uh, either you can stay tonight and save yourself on Friday, or you can come back on Friday and sign it, it's up to you.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
You'll stay. So then I'll put it with the, uh, the, the town clerk's office tomorrow, and then it's a twenty-day appeal period. Um, so once the appeal period is over, then you can install your, that's the air.
You can pick up certified copy, have registered, West County registration.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much, Rob.
Thanks.
Take care. Good night.
Um, actually, I skipped over this, so, uh, just want to introduce, um, Jack Carney, uh, to the board. Jack, welcome, I should probably let off a dent.
Thank you.
That is my fault. Um, Jack, you spent seventeen years on the Craft and Z B A. Um, you're also a licensed real estate broker and shop supervisor, and so I think it's a, a great asset board as well, so just welcome, I did this kind of for everyone last time, but, um, you weren't here, but welcome to the North Porro, do you make it? Um, so next up on the agenda, um, let me, let me do the consideration of minutes for the, for the, for the, for the meeting. Um, is there a motion, has anyone read the minutes and is, you know, have you provided comments back to the floor, Laurie? Um, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Uh, Chair, I'd like to, motion to approve the minutes as for May twenty eighth, so.
Yes.
Yeah, twenty twenty four. Yeah.
That's.
Seriously?
I'll second it.
Alright, is there, uh, just as a, raise your hand for your votes.
Can I make a point of discussion, I think the select board recently got in trouble for not doing this fast enough, so good on us for being fast enough. Yeah, yes.
Okay. See, there's, um, so there was an email from, uh, Lori about a recent, um, Affordable Homes Act, uh, legislation, um, uh, summarizing, generally speaking, but it sort of uses some of the guidelines, um, for accessory home use, um, that a resident can put on their property. Um, it's, probably doesn't necessarily directly attack this board, but I figured it was probably a good idea just to kind of, uh, just give like sort of updates, we've been hearing from town council, uh, others and sort of, you know, just from a high level view, and if anyone has questions or feedback or anything.
Yes, uh, so thankfully we got this wonderful update from K P Law, so whenever there's, uh, new legislation that's passed that has impacts for our municipal boards, then they give us one of these wonderful updates that we pay very careful attention to. Um, so one of the most interesting things about, um, the accessory dwelling law is that now they are requiring all communities in Massachusetts to allow accessory dwelling units by right. So North Porro thankfully was already on that train, um, so already we allow accessory dwellings by right. Um, but they had some additional stipulations that we do not violate. Um, and there are really only two major ones, um. One has to do with the maximum, um, I'm sorry, the minimum size of the unit. Um, so what they say, uh, what our regulations say is the maximum size is eight hundred square feet gross. And what they say, the new law says that it is based on a measurement of the principal dwelling. So, single-family home that's on the parcel, so it has to be either half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. So if you have a single-family home, then it's only, say, twelve hundred square feet. And the maximum size of the accessory dwelling is only six hundred square feet. Uh, so that's an interesting twist. Um, and then they also say that you cannot mandate that, um, a, the property owner has to live in one of those units. So right now, our bylaw does say that. Uh, so we say that you have to either live in the single family or in the accessory dwelling. So we're going to have to amend zoning bylaws, um, ideally in the spring, comply with the law. So we'll have to delete that entirely. Uh, there are some things that were kind of unclear, uh, to me when I was reading the law, so of course I read the update. And then I went straight to the Act, and I read the Act. And it wasn't clear to me, um, whether the town can dictate how the dwelling unit should be built. So right now, our bylaw says that it either has to be attached to the single-family dwelling, or it has to be attached to an accessory, an existing accessory building, like a barn or a garage. Um, so I cobbled together some draft changes for discussion purposes, there are a few, as well as with the planning board. And I thought, um, oh, and a third option is it could just be a standalone unit. Um, so that is something that I believe the town has a choice over. So we could allow like a mini home on, uh, the, the lot with the single family, or I believe the litigation, I mean, the, um, law doesn't require that, so we could say that it has to be attached to one of those other structures. So that's something that we can talk about later on. Um, and also there is a new definition for accessory dwelling. Uh, so our definition does not comply, so we would have to change that. So then there is another change, uh, which I found particularly interesting, and Bob and I have already discussed this. It has to do with the merger of lots under common ownership. Uh, so the way it's always worked is that if you have two lots in common ownership, then you only have, in the zoning changes, so say, um, when the lots were created, the minimum lot size was twenty thousand square feet. So you have a twenty thousand square foot lot here, and then right next door you have another twenty thousand square foot lot. Um, and these lots are owned by the same person. Um, and then the zoning changes, so instead of the minimum lot size being twenty thousand square feet, now it's thirty thousand square feet. So the way, uh, the law has worked in the past is that they only have a certain period of time to build on those two lots. If they don't build within that specified period of time, then for zoning purposes, they merge together. So then, instead of having two twenty thousand square foot lots, now you have one forty thousand square foot lot. So they may exist as two separate lots on paper. So on the assessor's database, um, it's two separate lots. They may be getting two separate tax bills, but when they go to Bob to get a building permit, um, he says, well, you already got a single-family home on the twenty thousand square foot lot, so no, you're out of luck. You cannot build on the other lot, they merge for zoning purposes. So this lot, the law changes that. So what this says is that, no, those remain twenty thousand square foot lots. So as long as those twenty thousand square foot lots were conforming at the time that they were created, then they continue to exist as twenty thousand square foot lots if a couple of things happen. One, those lots are in our single-family residential districts. If, um, they will be built with a single-family home where the principal structure does not exceed one thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet of heated living area, it contains not less than three bedrooms, and it's not to be used as a, as a seasonal home or short-term rental. So that has some pretty major implications, um, certainly for us, and not so much for you. Um, so those are the most interesting ones that I found. Um, there is another one that says if you have an inclusionary bylaw, so that means you have a bylaw that says that a certain number of units, um, need to be affordable. We don't have a bylaw like that. Um, we do in our new, uh, M B T A bylaw that was passed in the spring, we do have as a component of that in affordable housing set aside, but it's only for developments under that overlay district. But what it, what the new law says is that we can specify that a certain, uh, percentage of those units are for veterans. So that's a, that's an interesting change. So those are pretty much the, the key points that I want to highlight. I will be attending a workshop, I believe on September tenth. And I did send the link to all of you folks, uh, so if you are interested in attending, it's a free workshop. You just need to register and, uh, certainly you are welcome to attend as well.
If I can add to what Laurie was saying. Question's gonna come up, you know, in terms of how many situations like this are existing in North Porro? Um, there are two that I know that, in the, within the past couple of years, has had some activity through my zoning interpretation request forms, uh, can I put a, you know, a house on this piece of property and up until this law came out, the merging doctrine applied, so they could not. Um, so currently there are two properties in town right now that I've had some activity on, that doesn't mean we're limited to. But those are the two that I am aware of. Um, this, this whole thing about taking out the merger is kind of a reversal of the merger doctrine that was established back in the nineteen eighty, eighty-one, something like that. Um, and at the time, if you were in common ownership with another piece of property, uh, there was a big scramble out there to change the ownership model of the two pieces of property so that they can be protected. And this, and the other lot, the smaller one, could be still labeled as building. Um, so my, I'm not an attorney, but this seems to kind of negate that whole situation. I, my guess is that it's in response to the housing crisis?
Hmm.
Because there are, there are fairly significant amounts of these situations where, you know, you can put an eighteen hundred square foot house on it. You know, my, my question is, if not going to use it for short-term rental and some of the other situations, um, if they built eighteen hundred square feet, they're limited, so they can't put an addition on it. And, you know, so how do you control that? And number two, how do you control limitation of not allowing short-term rentals on it? I probably have to refer to the town council in terms of the mechanics on how to do that, I don't know if it's a deed restriction or what. But I think time will just kind of give us the opportunity to get a question out. So, yeah.
Thanks, Lori. Does anyone have any questions?
Did you say the merger one that's being mandated that we're gonna have to do that one? Or that's a, all of the ones you just mentioned this?
These are mandated. So that is the law and it goes into effect on February second. So we did have a conversation about the fact that our zoning bylaws are noncompliant, particularly with the A D U. We don't say anything about the merger in our zoning bylaws. So that's more of a staffing issue. But the to my understanding is with the A D U, we will the building inspector, so Bob is the enforcer, so it's his lucky job to ignore the noncompliant pieces. So even though it conflicts, so mass general law is more powerful than municipal law. So we either turn away from our own regulations and go with the state, or we risk challenge. So appeals of this decision if we don't.
That's one of the things, again, I would probably defer to maybe a town council advice on that. Is which direction do I need to go if I have to make the call one way or another? I mean, obviously this is, you know, it takes effect on February two. But it's also three months before town meeting. When we actually enact it and what do I do on that window? So, you know, that's another question I would probably pose to town council. My suspicion is probably go with what the state is requiring and what the chips fall on the may if somebody really wants to appeal it. The appeal would be to you both since the board.
In that case, the appeal would be coming from what, like butters or people agreeing as opposed to the actual applicant?
Probably the applicant.
They got denied.
Something. Well, if you're saying you're gonna go with the state.
Yeah. Can I just make a quick comment? Because I don't know where this, where our conversation fits into the how the warrant articles are going to be presented to the select board eventually and all of that. So speaking just of one voice here, it seems to me that the intent of the state law is to increase the availability of housing units, including by increasing the number of A D U's that are allowed under the law and most, I think that's a great idea. I also think that one guy's opinion. Anything, I don't, I think anything the town is doing to limit or get in the way of multi generational living, a family that wants to have grandparents living there and helping take care of children or a disabled family member who may want to live separately. I think, I think anything the town does that makes that harder is not something I'm a fan of, period. And I, so my next comment starts from that. So I would say if I were making moves in C, I wouldn't have the or nine hundred. I would say if someone has a four thousand square foot home with a two thousand square foot basement, they can convert that two thousand square foot basement into grandma and grandpa's home and the town is not going to get in your hair about it. But under this reading, that wouldn't strictly be allowed.
One, one of the things to remember is that the intent of the accessory dwelling unit is for it to be subservient to the use and the size of the dwelling. And if you have, say you have a, an accessory dwelling unit that's big enough to say have three bedrooms, that's a second family. And that's, and that's not the intent of the A D U. So I, I think it's, I think it's prudent, again, just my opinion, but keeping in the spirit of what the A D U represents, it's not a second family unit like a duplex. Okay, it's a, it's a subservient smaller housing unit for, just like you said, grandma, grandpa, sick individual. We just had one finally approved on the finishing here in town on Summer Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that particular situation followed the rules of current footprint. Okay, it was attached to a existing, preexisting structure, which is a garage slash barn. And there's no definition of how it's attached. So I said, make a pergola. And that's, that's attached. So, but the situation is this, the mom and dad have been living in that property for a long time. They built the A D U for themselves so that the owner's younger family, not adults with a family, can move into the main house. Okay, as it turns out, the gentleman that's moving into it is on hospice at home. So you know, you may not have a whole lot of time to enjoy it, but it's kind of a modernistic structure. There's no designer view required for a single family or an accessory single family. But, you know, the inside is very comfortable. It's a one bedroom with a very, very small office. It's built on slabs and there's no foundation, no basement. It's, it's very comfortable. And again, accessory dwelling unit is no longer called an in-law apartment because it's not just for in-laws anymore. It could be for a student that comes home from college, he needs a place to stay. It could be for somebody who, you know, is a you know, who has, who builds one of these things and offers it out for rent to say a touch, that's your, that's school student. Okay, to make some more income from the property. So that, that's one of the reasons why you see A D U or an in-law department. Keeping in mind that all A D U's still have to conform to the state building code. You know, two separate means of address. There can be no direct communication from what the landlord name to the A D U. Otherwise, it's just an addition. So I, I, I think this is pretty wise in terms of, you know, what they did. I understand the intent. I do think it's important to keep the A D U subservient to the main structure. But then again, you know, if you're at nine hundred square feet, you can still get a decent size. You can still squeeze in two bedrooms.
And I agree and appreciate everything you said. I'm, I'm just saying that it doesn't negate that a two thousand square foot space is subservient to a four thousand square foot space. And maybe grandma and grandpa want to have a little hobby room where he can do woodworking or something that complies with the zoning. And I, I just don't think it's for the town to say how big grandma's little space can be and it can't be bigger than nine hundred. That's where I'm coming from. I'll probably be speaking to the board when they're considering the language, but I'm just telling you where I'm coming from is I don't think it should be limited to nine hundred square feet. I think half of the main principle makes sense to make it subservient, but I think the nine hundred is kind of arbitrary. That's just my opinion. I'll, I'll quit talking about it and let us move on.
Okay. Great, thank you guys. Appreciate it. Other things that anyone needs to bring up? Suzie, announcement time. Yeah.
Hey, my last town concert this weekend, Sunday. And it's at a new location. We were asked to do the first concert at Complex. So it's at the high school and we have Lauren Diamond and Fred Abatelli and Anna Lee. And the, the music includes which are special performers that will be with them. We will have Norafro House of Pizza. We will have after smash burgers. We will have Yalman's, Yummy Mummy and No Face Painters that still come. So we would love to see everyone five o'clock. So we are the first concert at my complex. So we're, we're thrilled about that.
What's it?
Sunday.
Sunday.
Sunday. That's my, that's my announcement. Thank you, Paul, for always remembering. My other town announcements.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, question. Lori, are we gonna get an updated bylaw book?
You know, that's a hard question.
Is it? Okay.
You'd think that we would have had it long ago and I am anxiously awaiting it myself since my book is blocking part. I don't know what the holdup is. They've had, so the changes were sent to E code. I actually incorporated them into the bylaw book myself. But what we've been told is we need to get the official version from E code. And then we can send it to the printer and it should be all set. So these are the two thousand twenty three changes. So the two thousand twenty four changes have not yet been affirmed by the attorney general. So we cannot yet incorporate those. But I did speak to Michelle Sweeney and asked her to get an update for me and she hasn't gotten any answers yet. So I will, as soon as I get the answer, I will email it out to you. And it's very frustrating and I apologize for that.
It's alright.
Like I said, I don't know what the deal is.
Okay. Great, thank you. Mr. Chair, would you like to motion? Closing the meeting. Second?
Second.
Jake, a bit of motion to close the meeting. Brett, second meeting. All those favor. Alright.
Thank you. Thanks everybody.